Good morning. Happy New Year, Commissioners. There is a copy of the Open Meetings Act located in the North Wall Legislative Chambers, and there's also an automatic external defibrillator on the back wall of the legislative chambers as well. I would ask that we begin by doing the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Okay, first item of business is do a call to order. Commissioner Borgeson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Craft.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
And Commissioner Rogers. We will do the election of the Chair of the Board of Commissioners for ensuing year. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. Fressh, I nominate Commissioner Chris Rogers.
(inaudible).
Okay, so we have a nomination for Commissioner Rogers by Commissioner Boyle. And the second, there was multiple, but I'll just choose Commissioner Craft because I heard him first. Are there any other nominations?
I move that nominations be closed.
We will vote on Commissioner Rogers being the Chair for the ensuing year.
We're gonna have a secret vote?
Yeah. Give us one second here. Motion passes. Commissioner Rogers abstained. All other Commissioners voted yes. Congratulations, Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Rogers, I'm gonna point out, I think you're still able to vote on that machine, but I think there's some issues with the screen this morning, so you may not be able to see everybody who wants to speak.
Thank you. Before I start, let me say, you know, even though I ran the meeting several times, it's a different thing when you're officially in the seat, and I want to thank all my colleagues for your support and the honor that it is. You know, two weeks, we will meet again, and then we'll officially honor the past chairs we always have. But personally, I want to thank Mary Ann, or Commissioner Borgeson, in this formal setting for her, what, eight years here of, I guess if we were a nation, peaceful wartime leadership, where it's been, you know, smooth, even though there's been some issues, and her manner in going about this, not definitely the end, but I know the path she's about to take in bigger national leadership, and I think she needs her attention there. And I appreciate your leadership and support, and look forward to helping you and the other on that. So with that, we'd like to open the nominations for Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, I would nominate PJ Morgan for Vice Chair.
Second.
This motion is second. Seeing no further nominations, I'd like to, we will close nominations. Please vote.
Just one moment, please. Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mike, for making that motion, and thank all the Commissioners. I voted for myself. Mr. Rogers, I wasn't sure I'd get the four votes, so I took that step. Anyway, I thank you and agree with you that it's been a pretty harmonious board, and we're gonna continue to be exactly that way, hopefully for the next four years. And I hope to be here the next four years also. So take care, and thanks a lot, and look forward to working with you.
Same here. We'll officially call the Board of Equalization Meeting to order.
Commissioner Rogers, can we recess out of the ...
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Is there a vote to recess out of the Board of Commissioners?
Second.
This motion is second. Please vote.
I always like recess.
Motion passes. Commissioner Craft, did you mean to vote yes, or ...
Yes.
Okay. That's a, you meant, you, vote for the record Commissioner Craft meant to vote yes instead of no. Motion passes unanimously.
Time out.
Time out.
Time out.
We'll call the Board of Equalization Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Craft.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Item A, Approval of the Minutes of the Board of Equalization Meeting Held Tuesday, December 19, 2017. And Item B, Call for a Meeting and Set Tuesday, January 23, 2018, as the date for hearing on Certified Corrections. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
So moved.
Second.
This motion is second. Seeing no discussion, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item C is Citizens' Comments. Are there any citizens that have any comments at this time on any items that are not officially listed on the Board of Equalization's agenda? Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none, we'll go to Resolutions. Item D is Certified Assessment Corrections Addressing the Data Entry Error Made on the 2017 Property Evaluations. And, well, pretty much we have Items D through H. What's the rule of the Board?
Move for approval.
Second.
There's motion to second, approve Items D through H. Any discussion? Is that a conclusion?
Yes.
It does?
Yes.
No discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just want to point out, Item H, the Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership has a vehicle on there, and I'm a Board Member, so just wanted to point that out for the record.
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously.
I'd ask for a motion to reconvene the Board, oh, no, sorry, Board of Corrections, sorry. We are now officially open the Douglas County Board of Corrections Meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Craft.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Item 1, Approval of the Minutes of the Board of Corrections Meeting Held Tuesday, December 12, 2017. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion to second. Seeing no discussion, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item 2 is Citizens' Comments. Are there any citizens that would like to comment on any items not officially on the Board, not officially listed on the Board of Corrections Agenda? Seeing none, we'll go to Item 3 and report from the Director.
Morning.
Morning.
Can figure out, I'm not the Director of Corrections. I'm Michael Myers, the Community Corrections Manager for the Department of Corrections. I'm filling in for Dr. Fox all today, as he and our accreditation manager, Chris Sweeney, are wrapping up attending the American Correctional Association Conference, where we officially received word of our accreditation for another three years from the American Correctional Association for both the main detention facility as well as community corrections. With that, I will proceed with the report. Enclosure number 1, Administrative Services. We have, we are now slightly over budget at the end of the sixth month of the fiscal year. In enclosure 2, Community Corrections and In-House Programs. We hosted a group of individuals from O-Toc, Omaha Together One Community in December. It was their mental health action team, and they were there for a meeting and a tour. We had a lot of good discussions and ideas about how to engage with the collective resources of that group in future collaborations. 24/7 Alcohol Sobriety Program. Admissions, after three straight months of record admissions, we had 34 admissions, which is still one of our higher months ever, just didn't keep pace with the previous month. And we set an all-time high for a single-day census of 141 people on the program. There were 2,573 breath tests completed, 12 were positive for alcohol, and there were 11 no-shows for testing. The overall breath compliance, breath testing compliance rate was 99.1 percent. Thirty-six individuals were monitored for a total of 922 days of SCRAM monitoring. There were zero no-show violations, one tampering violation, and three alcohol violations. The SCRAM compliance rate was 99.6 percent. There were 10 positive drug test violations and no positive drug patch test violations, and there were five no-shows for drug testing. Work release admitted 28 individuals, and work release clients donated 246 hours of community service. House arrest admitted 62 individuals. Twenty-three individuals were admitted to the Reentry Assistance Program, and one of those individuals in wrap achieved a DED. Fifty-six individuals were admitted to corrections programs in the jail, and one individual there also achieved a GED. In pre-trial services, 15 individuals were referred for priority prosecution. 344 bed days were saved. 249 individuals were placed on pre-trial release, and 1,072 individuals were managed on pre-trial release over the course of the month. Enclosure number 3, Our Compliance with ACA, NCHC, and PRIA. We continue to collect data each month in preparation for future audits. And, as I just alluded to, our hearing with the American Correctional Association actually took place a couple of days ago, and we did pass that accreditation. Enclosure 4, Personnel. Officers from the new Higher Class 17-4 are assigned and working on their own, and we are continuing to review applications for a new Higher Class, which will be 18-1. There were 1,481 admissions, I'm sorry, I moved on to enclosure number 5, Population. 1,583 releases. Our high count was 1301. Our low count was 1169. And I do need to correct, the ADP is actually 1,244. There were 385 custodial sanctioned bed days. The U.S. Marshal population increased. ICE population decreased. Felony pre-trial decreased. Misdemeanor pre-trial population also decreased, and the female population remained static. There are currently three female housing units open. Moving on to enclosure number 6. There were 1,375 intake screenings, 453 health and physical assessments, 250 discharge referrals. Enclosure number 7, Mental Health. There were 93 initial psychiatric assessments, 114 initial mental health assessments, 37 mental health infirmary placements, and referrals for community-based mental health services. Outpatient psychiatric med management, there were 12. Mental health and co-occurring disorders, 130. Mental health therapy, and one individual was referred to a long-term psychiatric facility. I'll entertain any questions from the Board.
Mr. Moore.
Yes, I want to ask you, Mike, if, you know, a few months ago, we were working with Siena Francis House on talking about the people that we take care of and the people they take care of, which many times are the same people. I'd like to have us reopen those discussions if we could. I thought it was going pretty well, and I think some things just happened we didn't, neither one of us followed through, so, but if we could do that. The other is, I'm really interested, do we do, do we have any relationship with Community Alliance, or is there, can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure, we do, and it's not necessarily a relationship that's built into any, like systematically, but as, you know, from the medical department, the mental health professionals, the discharge planner, as well as our reentry specialists, identifying needs of individuals that seem to be a match for programs that Community Alliance provides. Those referrals and the facilitation of evaluations and interviews for programs are handled on a routine basis with Community Alliance and many others. But again, they're a very valuable resource to the community, and I'm sure we will continue to deepen that partnership.
That's good. Thanks, Mike.
Mike, you got off easy. I've seen no other questions.
So far.
Everybody felt sorry for me.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn in the Board of Corrections?
So moved.
Second.
This motion is second. Please vote for adjournment.
Motion passes unanimously.
I'm a little smooth with him.
Is there a motion to reconvene the Board of Commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
This motion is second. Please vote.
Commissioner Craft. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 1, Minutes and Claims. Item A is Approval of the Minutes of the Board of Commissioners Meeting Held Tuesday, December 19, 2017. And Item B is Approval of the Claims Submitted For Payment and Processed Through Tuesday, January 15, 2018.
Motion to approve A and B.
This motion by Commissioner Craft, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morgan.
Motion passes unanimously.
We'll now move to the Consent Agenda. There are 14 items on the Consent Agenda. Does anyone want to remove anything from the Consent Agenda? This motion by Commissioner Duda to approve is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Craft. Seeing no discussion, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item 3 is Recognition and Proclamations. We have five recognitions for county employees retiring. There's Cheryl Braun after seven years, Michael DeSarm after 18 years in Civil Engineering Office, Joe Douglas Martinez in Public Properties after 26 years, Renee Ricker after 22 years in Douglas County Communications, and Scott Wagner in the Sheriff's Department after 26 years of service. None of them are here with us, and we have the five proclamations, and we'll make sure they get them, their motion to approve A through E.
So moved.
Second.
This motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Kavanaugh. Please vote.
Give us one moment. Okay, thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 4, Citizens' Comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any matters that may not be officially listed on the Douglas County Board of Agenda. Citizens that comment have five minutes. Are there any citizens' comments?
My name is Levon Dennis Williams. My address is 8919 North 56th Avenue Circle. And what I'm here to speak about today, it's hard for me to even find the words without getting too emotional and be able to express this. But Saturday, our family member lost a person who was the best, the North Omaha, among the best North Omaha has to offer, and that was Sergeant Kyle LaFlore. And what I'm here to ask you and plead to you to do is to kick off a conversation of the need for each of you individually and collectively, to start conversations in your districts, with the Omaha City Council, and within this community, for us to start speaking up and speaking out when we hear and see crime. This tolerance of silence, while our community is literally killing itself off, 93 percent, nationally, 93 percent of black-on-black homicides are committed by other African-Americans. I'm not here to elevate the death or lives of African-Americans over anyone, because all lives matter. But when you have a community that's greatly impacted more than anyone else, I'm here to ask the elected officials to please start a conversation, to alert the community for the need for us to start speaking out and speaking up when crime is committed in this community, because it's destroying, this genocide has to stop. Sergeant Kyle was born and raised in Commissioner Rogers' district, and he died in Commissioner Duda's district. We have no answers to his son as to what happened or why this happened. We have, at this point, a lack of cooperation among people who saw it. The police are doing a great job, and I believe justice will be brought, will be served, and that person will be brought to justice. But in the meantime, Sergeant Kyle joins a long list of other people in this community who've lost their lives, and people know who are doing it. And there's these same murderers are being allowed to continue to run rampant over our communities. And so, I'm here out of frustration, I'm here out of fear, I'm here out of anger, that people saw what happened, and very few people are coming forward, and that's a culture that has allowed to just fester in this community. Commissioner Rogers, you know it more than anyone. You've been to the homes, you've confronted the people. You know what's going on. None of your districts are immune from it, whether it's a petty car theft to a homicide like this. But this man served five terms for our country, and he comes home over Christmas break to celebrate a recent promotion in the Army, and he gets killed over a necklace and a watch? And someone thinks it's okay to be silent, to allow that person to continue to be here? And I don't believe the community is ever gonna take this seriously until elected officials start speaking out and launch a campaign to alert the entire community that we need to start speaking out when we hear and see things. Thank you for this opportunity.
Yes. Commissioner Morgan.
I want to thank you for coming here to talk to us, and Commissioner Rogers, I think all of us want to do whatever we can to try to be a louder voice, per your request, to assist, and I know your leadership will help us do that. I know Commissioner Borgeson has worked on this also in the past, but we need to even do a better job than we've been doing. So you really get to us with, you know, serving, the gentleman serving five terms, comes home for Christmas, and over a necklace and a watch, to have that happen is just so unfortunate, horrible, and just not what we want to see happen in our community. So keep on us by phone, you don't have to come down here to make that trip, but call any of us anytime and give us any suggestions that you can, so we can do a better job, and let's really talk about this, keep it on the agenda, whether it is, and I hope it's not weekly, but when it happens, we need to be a voice. And I agree with you, with the City Council, and I know Ben Gray has been a good leader also in the community. So we'll do all we can. Thank you.
Commissioner Borges.
I just want to say I'm sorry for your loss with this, and I agree that we, as elected officials, have an opportunity to step up, and so I'll be talking to you about what it is that we can maybe get together and start those discussions going. So I know it's hard for you to be here, but I appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Let me say, Levon brought it up, and I've had a note, and I didn't know how to express this, because the person hasn't expressed it, but I think the county should know that, I mean, this is very personal in the county in respects, because the young officer that died is the nephew of a county employee. That employee hasn't come forward, and I don't want to put that out there until he's ready, but it's a personal thing around here. And I'd let the Board know, and you can make your outreach, but he hasn't chose how to address it, and I don't want to be ahead of the stick on that. But I'd also like to say to the community that Levon brings up a great point. Tomorrow and weekly at the Omaha Home for Boys, there's a meeting that happens, been happening for years. It's a violence prevention meeting that the police come to every month, and I look forward to going to that meeting tomorrow to kind of see how the community wants to handle it. There's usually about 200 to 150 people there that gathers with the empowerment network to try to address these issues. It hasn't been all deaths are bad, but it hasn't been one that's been this personal for a while, with a service member and some other things of that sort. So not just for this, but a lot of other things. I'd like to encourage the community that can attend those to attend them and get active in not only this, but all the efforts to present, to prevent crime around the community. So with that, I want to thank you for your recognition on that, and it's definitely something that'll be in the forefront, and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Chris.
Commissioner Moore.
Levon. I wanted to say that, you know, it's, first of all, I think it rips at the hearts of all of us. When I read of that, I thought, what a tragedy, and, I mean, it is a tragedy, the death of a young man who's doing so terrifically, and his family's so active on 24th Street and all the things that go with it. And the other deaths that occur, they always, they're just terrible. It's really ironic that you would speak, because you're the one, you're one of the principal people who's helping turn things around. The things that you have done with your counseling and programs that you have, have really had terrific results. And so, you know, you're really at the forefront of what you're trying to correct, and I don't know whether you even realize that or not, but to me, the, you know, a meeting with some of the wealthiest people in the city, you know what their concern is, to try to get to the children, to change their behavior somehow. And it's through EduCare and all these early education things and all the other things. Of course, we've got problems with guns, but that's another, that's another issue. But there are people in the community, the entire community, I think, just bleeds for this, this problem. It's one that we are all interested in trying to solve and doing our part. Sometimes it's a little disjointed, but there are a lot of people, and you're one of the persons right at the forefront of making things change for the better.
Makes you wonder if it's even worth it.
Yeah, it is. It is. Thank you.
Thank you, Levon.
Any other citizens' comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to Presentations, and Item A, which is a presentation of the 2017 Investment Council performance. Tim, Simmons Treasurer's office, Tim Kavanaugh. John. Tim's name's on the agenda, John, so I'll go with that.
A little hard to follow. I'm sorry. Obviously, I think you all know my past background with law enforcement, so I always have cared about this community and the lives of our young people, so, and the parents of that young man are close friends of my family, and I went to high school, or junior high school and high school with his mom, so, pretty devastating. What I wanted to do this morning was give you all a brief update on the Investment Council, partly because you all, through a lot of education from Joe Lorenz, actually took a chance on doing something different with how we manage the county's money. And anytime you take a chance on doing something different, there's always a little risk. And so I appreciate what the county board did by allowing us to investigate this opportunity. So let me start by thanking Teresa Urick and the County Attorney's Office, the civil side, for looking into this with us and interpreting the state statutes and the way the Nebraska Investment Council invests money, and allowing for the interpretation that we could follow the same statutes that they actually utilize to invest the tax dollars and resources for the state of Nebraska, because that's whose policy we actually mirror. And so we're excited to report to you that we have been able to make $300,000 more in investment income in a little bit over three months, or 11 months, in the time that we had this Investment Council up and running, and that includes the fact that we were implementing Oracle and a whole lot of other things in the in the clerk and the treasurer's office. So I believe in reality, once we have settled down with all of the other things that we've got going on, that those returns will continue to grow and we will continue to get better. So I want to thank the Investment Council team. We have, obviously, Michael Green, which a lot of you are familiar with, who is the CEO of Evergreen Capital Management. We have Joe Lorenz, the Finance Director. We have Sherri Larson, who is the Chief Deputy with the County Clerk's Office. And I want to thank County Clerk Dan Ash for allowing her to be a partner with us in this effort. We also have, from my office, Tim Cavanagh, the Chief Deputy, Patricia Carter, the Senior Director of Accounting and Auditing, Amy Wyman, our Accounting Manager. And then she's somewhere around here, but Jamie Manzito in the Treasurer's Office as well does a lot of our support work as the Administrative Coordinator. But we've put together a great team that has worked well for the county. And I believe this is how government works best, when we have private sector, public sector breaking down silos, working together for the citizens of Douglas County and working across all of those artificial barriers to be able to come to great solutions. And we're excited to tell you about the $300,000 and the belief that we believe the income and the investment returns will be even greater in the future. So as I said, thank you for taking a chance and we'll answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Borg.
Not a question, but to congratulate you. You have, uh, just done a, an unbelievably terrific job as a county treasurer, as an elected official. And, um, the teams that you put together, I read of you and your lovely wife frequently, your involvement in the community. You're there all the time for a lot of different things, John. And, um, uh, I really appreciate what you've done. This is really, uh, a smart way to approach, uh, your responsibilities. And I personally appreciate it as a taxpayer and as a county commissioner.
Thank you.
No other questions, say you like. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. We don't, we, we have no screens.
We have no lights, okay. Um, and I, uh, think this is a great thing and, and it's a tribute to you, Mr. Ewing and your, and your staff, your forward-looking approach to, uh, county government that, uh, you've been able to implement, uh, something that's going to have a significant impact, not only immediately, as you indicated, um, but long-term, over, over a long period of time. This is going to, uh, realize real savings and, and increased, uh, investment income is like found money. This would not be happening except for your actions and those of your, uh, employees and the, and the individuals who serve on the council.
And the rest of the team.
Thank you. Uh, and, and we're happy to, to be partners with you, um, on this. I think it's a tribute to your forward-looking strategic approach to government. It's been a pleasure, um, serving with you, uh, since I've been on the board. I look forward to, uh, serving with you long into the future. And, uh, you're an inspiration to us all. The way that you approach these problems and the way that you get them done on, on this particular issue, on the issue of consolidation at the new West Omaha campus and, and the way that you modernize the offices is truly, uh, an inspiration to all of us in, in the county government about best practices. So thank you.
Thank you.
Is this something you're going to do quarterly, John, every six months, yearly?
Well, it will report to you as often as you want, but we're actually doing this every month. We're looking at our cash balances and working between the Treasurer's Office and the Clerk's Office and trying to look at the cash needs for the county and making sure we always are liquid enough to pay all of our bills and then investing those excess dollars. So we're going to continue to do that. And as we get better at estimating the cash needs and managing that, that's where we'll be able to invest more money. So we're doing that daily, looking at where we're at, what our cash positions are. And so now that we are all on Oracle, I think we'll be able to do that more effectively and efficiently. And then that's where the investment opportunities will come and we'll be able to invest more cash and be able to get greater returns.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Do.
And, and I just want to say it's nice to see former Commissioner Green back again. Uh, I remember when he was my county commissioner in 1992. And I appreciate, uh, his continuing to help the county.
And that's part of the reason we asked him to be on the committee because of his government and business experience. We think it's a nice fit for this committee.
Very good. Nice to see him still involved, I appreciate it.
Any other further questions? Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, have a great day.
You too. Item B, presentation regarding the request by the Ronald McDonald House charities in Omaha for the county to issue tax exempt revenue bonds for the benefit of the Ronald McDonald House to finance improvements to his existing facility at 620 South 38th Ave. This is a public hearing. We will now open the public hearing.
Just a, just a presentation.
Okay. Sorry, I got a public, okay, sorry, public hearing to be held on January 23rd, ready room.
Chairman Rogers, commissioners, my name is Mike Rogers, I'm a bond attorney with Gilmore &amp; Bell. Here, uh, regarding, uh, a request from Ronald McDonald House of Omaha uh, for Douglas County to issue its revenue bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $6 million for, uh, to benefit Ronald McDonald House for improvements to its existing facilities at 620 South 38th Avenue. Uh, the county would issue the bonds under sections, uh, 13 dash 1101 through 13 dash 1110 and loan the proceeds to Ronald McDonald House. Uh, the repayment obligations would be solely those of Ronald McDonald House. There would be no pecuniary liability on the part of the county, uh, or its taxpayers. Uh, the bonds would be purchased by Premier Bank in a, uh, private placement or direct purchase and under, um, with a ten-year term at an initial, an initial interest rate of, uh, 3.25 percent. Uh, these bonds would be issued as tax exempt bonds, um, uh, which is, uh, continuing to be possible under federal tax laws. Uh, uh, a hearing and formal resolution will be, uh, held on January 23rd. Lindsay Ray Reasoner of, uh, the Executive Director of Ronald McDonald House, uh, is here to, uh, talk a little bit about the project.
Thank you for giving me the space to speak today. As Mike said, I'm the Executive Director for the Ronald McDonald House and I get the privilege of telling you a little bit about what this means. So those who haven't had exposure to the house, uh, just yet, we are the facility that houses all of the most critically ill children that have nowhere else to go except for Omaha to receive the treatment that they need. So with the incredible medical community that we have and they do all of the heavy lifting on treatment, the families then have a place to stay with us. So any one of us who has kids or was a kid themselves or knows a child knows that you would do anything and go anywhere for your child. And that's what you have in common with all of the families who are staying with us. The problem is, we're out of room. So we have a twenty-room facility that has a full kitchen and, uh, we set up the environment. So it's an interdependent support network for families with families and we bring the community in. And we've had to turn families away seven hundred times in sixteen. We exceeded that number in May of seventeen and we're obviously full right now. So we did a lot of research and figured out exactly how many rooms we need and what kind of programming opportunities we can provide for these families to give them the best opportunity to heal. So we're going to grow by 100% in order to do it. And what we found is that there's a couple of things that we don't do and we're not in the business of adding on programs just for the sake of it, especially when we've got so many other great partners in town who can help us, one being UNMC. So we just do hope and healing. We don't know anything about providing treatment, but UNMC does. So they're going to be putting a treat, we will be putting a treatment center inside of the Ronald McDonald House. So all of those families, whether they're being seen at the med center or not, have the opportunity to receive the care that they need right there in-house. And so that's really a response to, a proactive response to some of the changes in healthcare that negatively benefited the hospitals and potentially some of the kids who are there too. In addition to that, we don't provide financial services for our families, but another organization in town called Angels Among Us does. And so they'll be providing their, they'll put their headquarters inside of the Ronald McDonald House as well. And thirdly, we're going to have a full education program that will be led by another nonprofit who's well-versed in it as well, who is going to provide, um, the, the hope to fill the gaps in education that some of these kiddos and their siblings receive when they come into town. So those are some of the extra things that we're adding in addition to the twenty rooms and bigger kitchens and more support spaces and things like that. The total project cost is 10.3 million and we have raised, and this is the first time I'm allowed to say this publicly, 100% in pledges. Um, and before the Treasurer's Office left, about a quarter of the people in this room have contributed to that project. So that being said, with this type of interest rate that we can get on the bridge loan that helps us to make those payments as the pledge payments come in, would be exceptionally important to keep those costs low. And I know that that's something that's not only important to all of us in this room, but to Omaha as a community and we have the opportunity to do that. So, um, with that, I, can I open it for questions? I'd be happy to entertain any questions if you've got it. And, um, and also I just really want to reiterate, reiterate how grateful we are to have the opportunity to come and speak with you today.
Uh, let me say for the record, I made a mistake just to clarify, the public hearing will be on the 23rd, not today. This is a presentation. Commissioner Borgson.
I just want to thank you for the details of the project and it sounds, um, absolutely amazing and wonderful. And congratulations on, uh, the efforts that you had in raising the money and moving the project forward. Very well needed, very much, thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
Well, I appreciate, and I know you and I have met before with my wife, Annie, and participated in your fundraisers and admire the great job your whole entire staff does there and the service they provide is very helpful. I'm going to likely miss a meeting on the 23rd, but I know that, uh, we will hopefully be supportive of this. I for sure am supportive of what you're doing and, again, wish you the best. And this will be great for our community to expand your operations there. So, just wanted to state that.
Okay. See no other further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And see you on the 23rd. Committee, uh, items. Uh, item A is Finance Committee, Commissioners Morgan and Borg.
Anything you have, Mike, first?
Still have money in the bank. Right, Joe? Oh. I think Joe wants to make a comment or two.
Meant, uh, announce, so go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, give a little update. You know, with the change in the tax law, there was an incentive for people to prepay property taxes. And so, um, I looked at the data that was in by, by January 1st. And in a typical year, uh, three to four percent of the people prepay their property taxes. This year, 10% of the people prepaid, uh, property taxes. And what that means is that the county received an incremental $6 million. And that was received, uh, before December 31st. And, uh, that was prepayment of next year, of the 2018 taxes. And so, uh, while we get that incremental $6 million, it, it's a good thing to get the cash early. Uh, the other thing to keep in mind is, uh, in my estimate, two to three million of that is really, uh, for the second half payment for the fiscal year 2018, which is, you know, the next fiscal year. So we got two to three million of that a little early into this year. And as we go through the start to budget process for next year, that'll, uh, be an item to keep in mind, knowing that, that there's like two or three million that have really switched years and been received, uh, fiscal year early. But overall, uh, this was a one-time thing, but it did have a, a positive effect on, uh, the cash flow of the county for this year. So I just wanted to give everybody that update.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Uh, want to mention, that's about a 300% increase in, uh, early payment now. Joe, I think that extra money, we have to be careful because it most likely, we should have a little of that money, two, three million, going into the cash reserve fund, I would think. So we carry it over to next year. I don't want us to get excited and think, hey, we can do some supplemental budgets or do something else. We still need to be very cautious and our effort should be, again, to try and make sure we achieve, hopefully, the goal of not having a mill levy increase again this year. And I know, Joe, you've already started the process of drafting some letters, uh, that we're putting out to all the department heads. Am I correct?
Yes, we're doing that and we'll, we'll get those out sometime, probably, uh, in, uh, mid-February.
Yeah, and, and Mike and I, you know, will continue to be in touch with you and work together if that's what, uh, Commissioner Robert Rogers decides as our chairperson.
Commissioner Cavanagh.
Joe, just following up on, uh, one of Commissioner Morgan's, uh, observations here. What is the cash reserve fund balance currently?
Uh, I think I, the last time I saw it was in December. The cash reserve was up, uh, about, uh, $20 million.
The balance is?
The balance was $20 million, yes.
And that's as of?
Probably, uh, the third, second or third week of December. I haven't seen the, uh, January balance yet. And we'll hit our, our low point right at the end of, uh, February. And that's when we'll see, you know, that, and that's the amount we see with the actual, uh, the low point is, which is always the important point to look at in the cash balance.
Okay.
Commissioner Borg.
Uh, Joe, I, I want to ask you, um, uh, following up on Commissioner Cavanagh, the cash balance or cash reserve, what, what is, what is the goal that you set? Do you think we ought to be, a percentage of our, uh, budget should be in a, in a reserve account?
Well, while it varies from every year, I think typically we've been in this range lately of having it be between, uh, 15 and 25 million. And, uh, we've been in that range and, uh, whenever we talk to the rating agencies, they've been comfortable with, uh, where our reserve level is. So, you know, an exact percentage is always, there's no hard and fast rule. But I think for the county, having it in that 15 to $25 million range gives us adequate, uh, financial flexibility.
Do we, uh, you know, one of the concerns that I have, I, I just ran into the, um, Executive Director of, um, the, uh, operations in South Omaha that provides much healthcare. And there's a lot of concern with what's going on nationally with talking of, uh, the talk of, um, cutting, uh, you know, Medicare, Medicaid, all this, particularly Medicaid for us. Uh, I'm very concerned that we're going to be confronted with a real, um, uh, a real crisis of, uh, care for people who, who, uh, receive this, uh, this benefit. Uh, and I know that there's, uh, Representative Ryan, uh, is, uh, planning on massive cuts from what I can understand. I'm very concerned about it. It's ironic because he's the one, uh, when he grew up, he's the one that received all these benefits all of his life, you know, because his father died early. I can say that because his name's Ryan and my mother's name was Ryan. And I have a funny feeling we're related distantly, I hope not. But in any event, um, I'm really concerned that, uh, this could, we could be confronted with having to pick this up someplace along the line through our statutory responsibility to care for those who are coming, falling through the safety net. So I mentioned that, I'm, I'm concerned about that quite a bit. And, um, uh, as we move forward, um, uh, you know, we, uh, we do need to take a serious look at the treatment of the mentally ill and, uh, we need to do some things that we've talked about quite a, quite a long time. And Corrections needs our help and so does, uh, our actual mental health facility over on 42nd. They need some help. We also need to be talking seriously about, um, hiring people for not only the assessor's office, I believe, but also 911. So, uh, there are some pressures that are going to be on this budget and I don't know if we're going to have the luxury of saying, uh, we're not going to fund the necessities of county government, public safety and the care of, of people who need our care. So I just put that out there because I know there's an urge, you know, really temptation not to do anything to raise a mill levy, but it is our responsibility to provide these services. And certainly, uh, I was talking to the director today, not to go on, but the director of 911 today and I've been reading up on what happened in California when the fires occurred. Uh, they had an emergency system, but they didn't activate it. And, uh, finally they did after it was too late and they reached about 5% of the 14% that had signed up for the system. So people were out there, uh, sleeping when the fire came up on their homes and it was devastating. We need to be sure we're prepared for, uh, an emergency. And I've called a special meeting that you'll be hearing about very soon to get together with Emergency Management, 911 and talk about a plan. Okay? Sorry to deviate, but.
Commissioner, I agree with some of your concerns, but the other thing as we, we look at is that the preliminary tax valuations that went out in, in December were up about 4.5%, look at is that the preliminary tax valuations that went out in December were up about 4.5%, which is the highest they've been in a few years. So, while we have additional costs coming, there's also, with the strength of the economy and the, and the property market, we have some incremental revenues. But exactly how they're going to counterbalance, I can't really tell at this point, but we're going to continue to monitor both the pluses and minuses and, and see where we come out.
Thank you very much. You do a terrific job, Joe.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, Joe, since, since some of this money is actually prepayment toward the next budget year's funding, do we earmark it as such? Do we put it in a separate account?
Oh, I think if we just keep it in the reserves and, and realize that, you know, 2 to 3 million of that money in reserves is really, we don't officially earmark it, but we mentally earmark it, that that would be really put towards next year's budget, I think we'll, we'll be fine.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we don't...
Right.
Thank you. Ryan. That's what I was saying.
Any other questions?
See none. Item B, Administrative Services. Item one, approval of the interlocal agreement between Douglas County and the City of Omaha for the continuation of the douglasomaha technology commission dot com for additional term until December 31st, 2027. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
You find in your materials, the attached interlocal agreement and related resolution, I've discussed with Diane Wallace, and she's here today. Diane, maybe you would come down for a second. Regarding the extension of what has proved to be, I think, a pretty productive collaboration, this basically extends our current collaboration to December 31st, 2027. It's been budgeted, and Diane, maybe you could give us just a brief outline of what it does.
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. Diane Wallace, Douglas County's IT Coordinator. So, this agreement, this interlocal replaces the one that was in effect, and minor changes, some wordsmithing kinds of things. In the former agreement, it said to go forward and do some things, which we've done, and in this current agreement, we've given them their names, so they're more easily recognized. This agreement was marked up and reviewed by the Douglas County IT Coordinator, the city IT Coordinator, the dot com CIO, all of our Oversight Committee members on the city and the county. County Attorney has looked at it, and it was put together by dot com and city law. So, all those folks have looked at it and think this is a good solid agreement that basically reflects how we do business today.
No questions? There's a motion to approve?
I'd move for approval.
Moved by Commissioner Kavanaugh, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Commissioner Boyle.
I started to read this, and I was interrupted over the weekend. What is the, you know, one of the conversations we have frequently with dot com, at least we used to, is the cost. What, what do you project the cost of this contract to be annually or over the term of the life of the contract?
Well, cost, the dot com brings forward their budget...
I'm sorry, I can't quite hear you.
Dot com brings forward their budget requests, like all the other departments. And what we have now is a cost model. So, the, the dot com budget is a January through December budget, and then based on number of employees, and number of computers, those costs are allocated between city and county. So it's...
So, so the budget, their budget doesn't conform with our budget year?
It's a different budget year, so it hits two of our years. So, the, the cost model, right now, they're working on their 2019 budget, and giving us that information, working with Joe, so that we have it in time when all the other departments submit their budget request.
Okay, well...
And they, they try to stay within the same kind of, you know, allowed increases as the other departments.
So, anyway, we're, we're voting on a contract, we don't know the cost of it?
It's, it's, there's some verbiage in there that it's all subject on funding being available. I'm not sure if that's...
Well, that's just a safe, that's what I've asked for, just in case we run out of money.
Yeah. It, it's, they, their budget has to be approved like every other department's budget, so there's no assumption that we're funding anything, so it's almost like a zero cost for this interlocal, because all the controls are in the budget process itself.
Okay, well, I, I'll ask Commissioner Morgan, do you remember, what's the city's budget? Is it January to December, or is it?
They're also, yes, January through December, like dot com.
I see, okay.
They're, they're both on January to December.
I was thinking that's what it was, yeah. So, maybe that's why...
But, but we, we break ours up, and they, they know they're fitting into our budget cycle, so they'll, basically, they get half of their 2018 budget falls in our fiscal year, and their first half of their 2019 falls in our fiscal year.
Okay, well, I don't mean to push this, but I do need to push this. What, what, can you give us the last, what did it cost us the last year? What, do you have figures for?
The, the current budget is 6.5 million, and when we go through the budget process, I always give them guidance that what we're looking at is low, single-digit growth in their budget, and they've been very good about coming in at those sort of levels.
So, it's about a $6 million annual cost that we're looking at when we approve this?
Out of the general fund, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Diane, I'd just like to comment on the excellent job that you do, and I, I think in reviewing this, you were, went over and above the call of duty and making sure that the county's getting the best possible deal for the dollars that we're spending, and I think that you should be commended for your hard work on this, so thank you.
Thank you.
See no further discussion. We have a motion second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item two, request approval for the MOU with MAPPA to acquire digital ortho imagery in the spring of 2018 as part of the Nebraska-Iowa Regional Ortho Photography Consortium. What's the will of the board?
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I met with Mike Shalhoub, and he's here today. Mike, if you could come down for a second regarding this kind of fascinating progression relative to the technology involved. When we first started doing this some years ago, and Mike can give you a better history than I can, the cost of doing this was, I believe, over a million dollars, our share. And as you'll see, the amount requested now is $51,935. And, you know, part of this is the progression in technology, and part of it is the fact that we've got an excellent overseer in GIS in Mike Shalhoub. So, thank you, Mike, for your great management of this important program. I don't know if you want to give us a couple of high points of just what it does. It's, it's kind of an interesting operation, so if you want to just tell us briefly?
Sure, sure. Mike Shalhoub, Douglas County GIS. Good morning.
Morning.
You know, this project is an exciting one for us, of course, who work in this technology, but it's also more than something just for, for tech people. This is a product that's used every day by many, many employees in the county and in the city and out in the public. So, it's become a very mainstream product, heavy usage, and as Commissioner Kavanaugh mentioned, we've had this nice trend of costs going down over the years and quality going up. And so, we're at a point right now where we're getting the best imagery we've ever received at the lowest cost we've ever paid. So, we hope to see that trend continue as technology improves and, and the processes become more efficient. But this is one of those products where I feel like we get a ton of bang for the buck. So, 51,000 and change. We paid 80,000 in 2016, so that's already a nice drop there. But for $51,000, the importance of this product to daily operations is, is almost a no-brainer, so.
And just one point, and the sensitivity that they show to the quality of the product is incredible. So, basically, you know, we're photographing our real estate footprint from the air, and these planes fly over and, and take pictures of everybody's property, which have multiple uses, but they do it in a particular window of the year where there aren't any leaves on the trees. And this is superior to, say, Google Maps, I think, and, and others, who fly over in the summertime, and if you flew over, you know, our neighborhood particularly in the middle of the summer, you're going to miss about 50% of what's on the ground, because there's big trees with leaves on them. And ours doesn't have that, and you get a clear view of everybody's property in, in a window of time that I think is, what, late March?
Right, mid-March to mid-April usually, depending on the, the temperatures and, and ground conditions that year, but it's, it's usually a pretty short window, which means the company that we hire to do this needs to have aircraft based here and ready to go, because even though we only may have a month to fly, not every single day is clear and sunny and with low winds. High winds can also affect this, and we get a lot of winds here in the spring. So, it's more taking the, having the aircraft here, and on those great, clear, windless, sunny days, they're up capturing as quickly as possible. So, it's a pretty interesting process, and we put together a very tight set of parameters for them to meet. And, and when I say "we," it's not just Douglas County, but it's the City of Omaha, it's Sarpy County, MAPPA, and some of the other surrounding communities, so we kind of cover the whole metro area. And that's how we negotiate some of our better pricing, by coming together that way.
Really, a, a great use of our resources, great savings realized by your oversight, and, and a great product at the end of the day that we can all use. So, thank you, Mike. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle.
Mike, I have a question, excuse me, about the contract itself, Section 6, future projects. I, I'm sure this is in there, so there's no competition to the, the contractor, but it says Douglas County shall participate in this project and not procure aerial photography services, including digital, you know what, orthophotos or whatever, and oblique imaging outside of this agreement for the years 2020 and 2022. Obviously, they must, excuse me, they must have put this in here too, so we don't go out and hire somebody else. Can you talk about that? What's that all about?
Yeah, sure. The contract with the vendor is actually with MAPPA. So, what you're looking at today is an MOU between Douglas County and MAPPA.
Uh-huh.
But the contract is a three-flight contract over six years, so 2018, 2020, and year 2022. Our MOU covers our funding for 2018.
Okay.
And we have a clause in there, in the contract, that says if, if the county board, whatever governing body, does not approve funding for those future projects, then we're not on the hook for that money. And MAPPA also has something in their contract that would enable them to be released from that responsibility as well. So, that's an important thing for us, because we don't know if funding will ever be available, and we don't want to commit to that far in advance. But it's also a, doing a three-flight contract like, like this allows us to give some confidence to the vendor that we're going to be familiar with their processes and, and how they go about doing this project, and gives us flexibility with our pricing. We get better pricing by negotiating a longer-term contract like that. We also get to spread our payments over fiscal years. So, in Douglas County's case, we're going to have some departments who are going to split their costs over fiscal year 2018 and 2019, which really reduces the burden on, on any one year's budget.
I, I read it the opposite. I, I thought they were telling us that this was restricting us, but I understand it now when you explain it that way. That's good. That's fine. You know, and I, there's a couple clauses that are missing. I don't know what, in our contracts, that gets, sometimes they don't get put in, but I don't know if there should be a drug-free clause or anything, if they need one, if that's overkill, and also the contract that says, you know, about not, just as Mike said, that if we don't have the money, we can get out of the contract. That's, those things concern me, particularly with these economic times coming from the federal government nowadays. One last question that's sort of on point, and if I'm out of order, Commissioner Borgson will speak up first, I'm sure, but I'm curious...
I'll help.
Mr. Duda. I, I'm curious, you know, I, I talked to the county assessor about using, getting GIS together with you, and I don't know what, what they do in, in that department. Do they do things that you do in the assessor's GIS? Do you know what they do?
Well, the assessor's department is responsible for some very specific information related to property and, and assessment and valuation and that kind of thing. So, that's really their, you know, business. Our role is more everything else but that.
Let me ask you, interrupt you, I'm sorry. Do you, do you provide this mapping to the assessor's office?
Yes, absolutely. The assessor is one of the partners on this, and they're one of the major users in the county of this.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Duda.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to briefly comment from MAPPA's perspective on this. This aerial photography thing, and, and MAPPA, incidentally, loves Mike. We have a great working relationship with...
We know why, too, yeah.
But this has been one of, really, MAPPA's better success stories through the years, too. This is more than just the metropolitan area. We go as far as Kearney with this, and I think Norfolk might be in it. I mean, this is a big deal, and every customer gets what they want. Different customers have different scales that they're after, and that come with different price tags. And, and so, every customer gets what, what they want. This is, this is a nice arrangement. MAPPA is the five-county metropolitan statistical area. Incidentally, Cass County just voted last week, they want to join MAPPA, so MAPPA may be enlarging to six counties down the road. But this particular agreement reaches far beyond MAPPA's borders. This is a big regional thing, and it's a win-win for everyone.
It really is a great example of different agencies working together, recognize the fact that coming together, we can negotiate better pricing, we can get a consistent product, because as you know, these types of things work a lot better if they're seamless across county lines. So, we have a lot of projects that spill into Sarpy County or Washington County, and no one likes it when the map stops at the county line. Life doesn't work that way, so, so we'd like to have a consistent product, and it also helps a lot of the smaller communities who don't have technical staff, aren't fortunate enough to have GIS staff, and they can leverage the collective knowledge of our consortium to, to make sure that what they're getting makes sense for their county and that. So, it's really been a nice project, and I think MAPPA's role has been pivotal. It's providing something that the state of Nebraska has not been able to provide, which is a funding mechanism for small counties and cities, and, and urban counties and cities to come in and participate together, so.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I'd just like to follow up on Commissioner Boyle's observations on, on the GIS, potential for consolidation here is, I think, apparent to us all, between the GIS operation that Mike directs for us and the portion of the Assessor Register of Deeds office. And I think the time is here for us to have that discussion again with the Assessor Register of Deeds relative to consolidating that adjacent, on the same floor, within feet of our excellent GIS department, a function of the assessor's office into the GIS office. I think that, again, working together, like Mike indicated with, with MAPPA, we can realize some real savings here. I, I just don't see the reason for us to have two GIS operations on the same floor, and one of them using the product of the other one, and yet, we don't have consolidation there. So, I'd urge our finance folks to look at that during our budget process, and let's try to get some consensus on this and move ahead. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
Well, Commissioner Kavanaugh, I appreciate what you just said. I was going to echo that, and I'm glad to see we've got, for sure, three votes, and I think there's more than that to get this done. First of all, the thing I was going to say before I was going to say that is, Mike, I appreciate the work you do, and I want you not to answer now, but I want you to be sure you feel comfortable if this board really moves to give that direction and try to make that request, as Mike has initiated for several years, to get that done. Be certain that you want to maybe inform Mike Boyle, because he initiated it, that you feel comfortable if we can work together to do exactly what Commissioner Kavanaugh said, and I know what others feel about. We don't need two departments doing the same thing, and I just know of your expertise in this area. So, keep that in mind, and I think we need to move it this year, for sure, Mike.
Commissioner Boyle.
I, I do want to mention, Commissioner Kavanaugh, I appreciate what you say. Let me tell you what, what happened, and I'm sorry to drag it out, but we did talk about having that merged. After this was discussed, I, Commissioner Morgan was there and others, and we talked about exactly what you just said. And I said, well, I'll talk to Diane about it. So, I did. And I said, we're going to, we're going to move your GIS into Shalhoub's department. She said, no, you're not. I said, well, yeah, we are. And she said, you're not. And I said, well, we'll cut the funding so you, you don't have the money. And she said, I'll, I'll find it somewhere else. So, I don't know that we ever followed through on cutting the funding, but it's still operating. So, she is, she said, we don't do the same thing that GIS does. So, I don't know whether that's... So I don't know whether that's quite on point or not, but Roger Morrissey put it in place, and so it's something that she inherited, apparently. But I mean, it could be just, you know, they're doing something different, maybe it's not GIS, but in case you hadn't noticed, sometimes I get a little strained with the assessor's office, so maybe I'm not the one to be making demands, but I, you know, I'd be glad to follow through and say, "What is it that..." Maybe ask civil service to tell us, "What's the job description of the people in GIS?" You know, we should know. And if it's the same thing he's doing, then that opens the door. If they're doing something totally different, then we should back off probably and ask them, change the name of the GIS. That's what she said. That's her position. And she, you know, we've been sued by elected officials before on budget problems, and if we don't adequately fund the department, I have a feeling she would sue us. But we should ask civil service, what are the job descriptions, and see if this falls under his jurisdiction.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
We've had discussions as well. I think Commissioner Borgson and I have met with her, I know you have, and others have had this discussion, and, you know, I just think, in a business-like fashion, we should revisit this with her. My understanding, and Mike was part of some of the discussions that we had with the director, the then-director, who I think is retired now, of her GIS operations, was there aren't any insurmountable big differences here. I mean, they're kind of complementary, if anything. And so, you know, how we get from here to there, I think, is a matter of, you know, probably cooperation rather than maybe confrontation and negotiations rather than litigation. At least I'd like to exhaust those avenues before we, you know, decide that we have to go another route.
Right.
I think that there's a lot of potential savings here. This consolidation is one that I think we've looked at, and we've discussed it with our experts. It makes sense. It would be better this way, and we should pursue that. So hopefully, you know, we can have some more discussions going forward in the budget process to help resolve this, you know, it's a little bit overdue, I think, consolidation that we need to go forward with.
Commissioner Morgan.
What I was going to suggest, Commissioner Boyle, is why don't you and I, and we meet with Mike, maybe first part of February, for sure, kind of talk about your comfort level? I don't want anyone to influence you about that.
Sure.
I want you to be independent and tell us candidly, "Hey, this is what I think can work." You may hear from some other elected officials before then. We're not going to lobby you to go our way, but we want to find out if we can do exactly what I think the majority of this board wants to achieve in putting that together.
Yeah, and I'd just add to that. I have a clear picture in my head how this could work, and I don't want to characterize it as a turf battle or anything like that. From my perspective, we have skilled, qualified GIS staff in the assessor's office who have a specific duty in their managing GIS related to property value and property assessment. We think there's some best practices that could be applied there, some improvements that could be made to processes that could result in some improvements in data and output. We think we can help the assessor's office. We really think it's a win-win-win, in that the county assessor's office would win, because they'd get some improvements in the data and applications that they get out of this. The county GIS department and Douglas County as a whole would win, because we would have efficiently brought together some of these services. And I think the public wins. I think the output that results from this is a win for the public. I think they're going to get better information, more transparency, new tools to, you know, really look and analyze your property and your property values. So I think it can be a good thing. I'm not a very political person, so I don't like to get caught up in that part of it. I'm more technical. And I'm certainly more than willing to sit down and work out a plan of how something like this could work, understanding that we're not saying, "Let's remove GIS from the assessor's office." That should never happen. GIS is an important part of the business they do. It's just how it's done, I think, is how we could change that, and I think there's a big improvement that could be made.
Commissioner Craft.
You were president of NACO, excuse me, at one time. Do you know of any best practices in GIS and assessors? Is there any history of combining those offices? Is there any history of making sure they're separate? Can we find out?
I'll say a small piece, but Commissioner Borgson may be more current. I'll say there's not a blueprint for it out there. It's not something that's actively done, but it's not to say that it can't be done. I mean, I think Mike just pretty much gave us the pathway. The perception is that one has to lose. There will be some presence, it seems like if this was to happen, but there are, I'll put it like this, there's numerous examples in NACO where they've been creative in regards to combining services. So there's nothing on the books against it. There are probably stories out there that we don't know, but I don't think it's unprecedented and unwarranted. You want to add anything, Mary Ann?
Nope, you're right.
Okay. Commissioner Borgson, and then Commissioner Boil.
Well, and, you know, years ago, I asked Mike to put the plan together to make the GIS a county department, and took us out of it as a board. So the politics were out, and it worked beautifully. So the plan that he put together was reactive, we reacted to the plan, but it was put together by all those who were actually doing the work, and it worked. So I think that if we gave Mike direction saying, "Do what you just said," and say you feel comfortable with writing a plan on how this could work, so that everybody could react to it, versus kind of the conversations that we've had that haven't led to much success. So, but, you know, I do want you to give some thought, though, in the combining of them into one area versus keeping them into two, if you're looking at this. And then just come back with something for us to react to and talk to the others, you know, that you work with, the other GIS people in the assessor's office, and you guys come back with the plan. Because, again, that takes the politics out of it, so I think that might be a good way to at least move forward a little bit, and then the finance committee can take it from there.
Commissioner Boil, then Commissioner Craft.
Well, I'll just say, that is exactly what I was going to say, too. I think, you know, this, you're going to do this, doesn't work. And I think every elected official would react that way, so, I mean, not to single out the assessor/register of deeds, I mean, I think she responded pretty normally. So I think what Mike just brought up and what you just said makes a great deal of sense. Let's do that. Let's give that a shot.
Commissioner Craft.
Yes, I don't think we can ever take the politics out of it when we're stepping on an elected official's toes in their view. But if we're going to ask Mike to do this, we should also ask Diane to give us a list or enumeration of why she doesn't feel it would work, a justification why it should be in her own department.
Commissioner Duda.
I appreciate Commissioner Craft mentioning Diane Badiato's name, because up until now, we're making all these decisions about her employees and how we think they ought to be structured, and that's been our historical roadblock. They aren't our employees. I'm all for looking at a plan, seeing, you know, I'm thrilled that you have some ideas of how we could move this forward, and in all likelihood, they would be an improvement to the system. But we had to talk to Diane. These are her employees. We keep making decisions for her, about her employees, and until we can sit down and work with her about how can we turn this into a win-win, where everybody gets more bang for their buck, that's the missing piece here, is a little more respect for Diane and willingness to accept that these are her employees, and we can only merge them with her blessings.
If I could just add a comment there. In two years ago, when the assessor and register of deeds offices were merged, I did draft a plan that I proposed and met with Diane prior to her taking over as the assessor/register of deeds. It wasn't fully detailed, it was more of a summary of how I was proposing that we might merge some of those services. So we have done some of the work to start on, you know, technically and workflow-wise, how would this look, how would this work? Certainly, that could be expanded into more detail, and I'm more than happy to sit down with Diane and her staff, and I do have conversation with her staff, and we do support their department still. So it's in my best interest and my job to have a good relationship with the assessor/register of deeds, and I've been here 12 and a half years, and I'm still working on that. You know, and it's, I get caught, because I'm not in elected office, that's an elected office, and you're absolutely right, she has control over that office and her staff. So our interest is in helping them do their job, and that's what we try to do for other county and city departments. And so our interest in this is to improve GIS as a whole for the assessor/register of deeds and the county and the city.
Very good. Thank you, Mike. Commissioner Craft.
Yes, and playing off what Commissioner Duda said, not only are these her employees, but this is also her need for information and the need that the information will now flow in a timely and proper manner. So we need to find out a way to overcome that fear and make sure she's provided with the adequate information at the time that she wants it and needs it. Thank you.
Seeing no further, discussion on this subject, we need a motion and a second. Is there a motion? Commissioner Kavanaugh's motion is a second. Commissioner Duda, please vote. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Mike, can you send, you said you had an initial draft, can you send that to everybody so they can have, that you put together, if you still have it?
I should probably put today's date on it.
Okay. All right. Item G, human resources. Item one is the weekly personnel report from civil service. We have that attached. Yep, Commissioner Boil.
Yes, I wanted to ask a question. I looked at the civil service vacant job postings report, and there are an awful lot of people and continuous postings and so forth, and I wonder whether anyone, not necessarily the individual department, but I wonder if the, if these are going through the civil service commission. Are we doing anything to recruit? Do we use a private company to look for people? I mean, I, if you have a, you know, oh, I guess, maybe a, like a psychiatric LPN, if we had a professional agency that worked on that, and they got a cut from the county, they were paid by the county, to find somebody and recruit, one of the several jobs I had over time, I used to work two and three jobs at a time. One of them was at an employment agency. And you would call, you'd cold-call people, companies, and you'd get ahold of employees, and you'd talk to the finance person or somebody, and you wanted that person to go to work for somebody else. And so you'd call them and talk to them, and then you'd try to recruit them away from their present job into this other job, and it worked. One of the experiences I had was when the Hilton Hotel opened on Dodd Street, I actually got a guy hired to run the hotel, and he went on to work for Hilton in North Carolina and became a big executive with the company. Anyway, crazy story. But what they do is they go out and make phone calls and try to find people, and it's something beyond what we do here. I mean, we don't do that. So I'd just like to suggest that it can be very productive if you're actually going out and trying to yank these people from the job they have into the job that we have, we need filled. I think we ought to explore it.
Commissioner Borg.
Be happy to explore that, but I can tell you that they do and have increased the use of job fairs.
Yeah.
And have been successful with getting on and into many more of those, so.
Well, if I may.
Yes.
Job fairs are very useful, but people that are, you know, if we wanted to recruit someone, they won't show up at a job fair. They're not, they may be interested in leaving their job.
No, I know, I'm just saying, we do, we already do something, but not what you're talking about. But we would, we'd be glad to talk about it.
I think we ought to look into it, because it's a couple steps above what we do.
Yeah.
Because, you know, if we're trying to hire somebody, first of all, they may be thinking of changing, but they don't want to be out there in front of somebody and get caught looking for a job, you know.
Right, yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, I'll look into it.
It'd be kind of interesting to get, pick out a couple of these categories and hire a specialist.
Item two is legislative issues. As everyone knows, we had a breakfast yesterday at the Capitol with Sarpy and Lancaster County. It was fairly well-attended. Most people had to leave at nine, but after that, a few people came in. There was obviously the 800-pound gorilla in the room, and that's the conversation about LR 831, the local official salary piece. From the fill in the room, there was not a lot of support toward that move, but it still needed to be discussed to some degree from those people that came. Also, talked a lot about what issues that they had on their head, and those are still developing, and we look forward to what's going on in the future. You got an updated sheet from Kelly and Plucker in regards to the issues that were going on the first four days. Those should be in your mailbox. And with that, if any other commissioners have any items. Commissioner Borgson.
Just wanted to, I'm sure you've all read it, but just point out that Senator Ebke had put in a bill to increase the number of district court judges here. This will give us a 17th district court judge, so that bill's been submitted. And then, I haven't read it thoroughly, but I think we need to have a discussion on it, and that's Senator McCollister's LB 776 about the inmate access and telephone. That is, as you know, a revenue generator for inmate programs. It's not a revenue that we use for general fund, but it's used to go back into sources for the inmates. So loss of that could be detrimental to the programs to which we provide, so we need to talk, but I haven't read the bill thoroughly yet. And then the other one is LB 861, Senator Watermeyer's. That requires certain prosecution costs to be paid for by the state, and there's a formula that he's presented on how to cap that cost to the counties, and I'll read that a little further and report back. But those are three that I think we need to watch, besides the one that Commissioner Rogers talked about, Chair Rogers talked about. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Seeing nothing further, we do have a need for executive session on litigation. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Boil, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Yes. Motion passes unanimously.
I should have brought this up before we adjourn, but I want to make mention, and I think you intended to do this, but I want to thank Commissioner Borgson for the incredible leadership, a very talented person. She has done a terrific job for us. She has a memory like a trap, and she's constantly calling me out on it when we have conversations. She is really, just really very good in everything that she touches. She's so knowledgeable on medical issues and care for people. She's just really a terrific asset, and I didn't want the day to go by without acknowledging and thanking her for her leadership. As far as I'm concerned, I'll still be relying on her, but I'll be hitting on your experience as well, Commissioner Rogers. But I just want to say, I personally have appreciated the effort. And I think the other note I'd like to make is, you know, that someone asked me once about running, and I said, "You know, I really don't, really don't want to." I said, "Why would I run against, I wouldn't want to try to replace Mary Ann with the experience she has and the way she handles people, the effort that she puts in, and just, I've heard her speak and pull these concepts out of the air about how to improve things, and it's really terrific." And the fellow said to me, "Well, she's a Republican." And I said, "You know, that just doesn't make any difference." And I just, it knocked me out, because we don't function that way. When Claire and I... When Claire and I spar on things, we never do politics, we do, you know, I just think he's wrong most of the time.[605.14][605.14](laughing) Anyway, but thank you for your service, Mary Ann, you've been, you were a terrific chair, and I, and I'm very confident we'll have the same sort of service from Commissioner Rogers, so thanks.
And twenty-second, we'll, we'll get a chance to really lay it on it, yeah.
All right.
Commissioner Borg.
Sorry. But I also need to thank Commissioner Boyle for his kind words, but I do want to point out that Commissioner Duda's really moved up in the world. His fancy socks, he has taken on the fancy socks.
I know, I was gonna say, you're influenced by Commissioner Rogers, that's good.
Starts there.
Oh, not too shabby, Morgan, too. I got plain black ones on, sorry.
So luckily, we're officially adjourned. Well, in session, I mean, officially in session.
All your socks. All your socks.
One moment, please.
What's that?
I said, one moment, please.
Uh, one moment, please. Go ahead. Please vote. All right. Motion passes. All commissioners present voting yes. Commissioner Boyle is absent.
There he is. Nope, he's just.
Do you want to be a yes?
On my phone. You want it all, all your stuff? Oh, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Boyle voting yes as well.
Do you want your keys and everything, or just your?
Yeah, my keys, too. I'm sorry. Keys and telephone.
Are you leaving now, Mike?
No, I want to go to the office. Just save it for now.
I'll bring.